Call the meeting to order. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Strand.
Here.
Derrick.
Here.
Grinberg.
Here.
Pepcorn. Mahoney.
Here. We lost one of our former governors, Bud Sinner, this week. And I think many of us had known him through his time. A very interesting man and a very much a servant to the state of North Dakota, so we will miss him. I think any one of us has gotten some advice from him, whether it was welcome or unwelcome at some time in our lives, but he is truly an interesting gentleman. Health. Interestingly enough, in 2017, 2018, the school immunization assessment conducted annually by the North Dakota Department of Health shows that North Dakota's kindergarten immunization rates have remained at about 94% for all required vaccines. Fargo Public Health has contracts for a school nursing with Fargo Public and Cass County Schools and partners with them to work towards compliance with school immunization requirements for all grade levels. Another interesting thing is through the federal-state targeted response to the opioid crisis grant, Fargo-Cass Public Health was able to assist 114 people into seeking treatment for opiate use disorder. John, I think that's excellent, don't you?
It's amazing, and needed.
The purpose of the grant project is to address gaps and build upon existing statewide efforts for increasing access to evidence-based treatment and recovery services. So it appears we're making less deaths this year and we're making some progress in people getting some treatments. The library has several fun and interesting programs scheduled over the next couple of weeks, including Kindergarten Success, Storytime Sessions for preschoolers and their parents, sessions on making homemade bath fuzzies and lufta soap, make-your-own-hyper-toofta-pot workshops, and Beginner Yoga Classes. Also, a Design a Bookmark contest runs through March 31st. Transit. Transit implemented Tap Ride in January, a new on-demand service licensed to the NDSU campus and is a safe ride home for students. The new service has been well-received and completing an average of 13 rides per hour. Tony, I think you liked that one. That was where the students can get home after they're studying in the library. Yep, yep. And then Mat Bus I-GO-E-GO Challenge begins March 19th and will run for five weeks. The challenge encourages participants to give up driving their car for at least one time per week and instead ride mat bus, walk, bike, roller skate, or carpool to work at our school. Each week, participants who enter the contest are eligible to win a prize, and those who participate each week are eligible to win a grand prize valued at $1,000. Prizes are sponsored by Fargo Radio, FM Media, and Gate City Bank. This is one that Kent's pretty proud of, this next one. Standard and Poor's Corporation has upgraded Fargo's existing bond ratings on the various bond issues from AA minus to AA, a one-notch increase. Reasons cited in the report include linking their creditworthiness criteria, fundability of our resources, and the ability to manage those resources, which drives their view of our ability and willingness to pay our obligations. This is good news as far continues a market-high quality bond for infrastructure and other projects. Now, the only thing competing with the count, if the state gives us those interest rates of 1.5%, what are you going to do? Is there a motion to approve the Order of Agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for February 26, 2018, regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items 1 through 26?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Derrick.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. I want to start with the regular agenda. Rocky Schneider and myself are going to give you a diversion project update. We've made great progress in the last several weeks, and we just want the commissioners to be aware of what's going on. I think many of you have already been briefed with this as far as the public and yourselves as well. So we'll go through this.
Good afternoon. I'm Rocky Schneider. I'm with AE2S. We have a diversion project update for you. I appreciate the opportunity to come and update you on it. You do have a packet in front of you. It includes a press release that the Diversion Authority sent out last Friday, along with a number of maps and information that are all available on the website, fmdiversion.com as well. So why we're here, we're here to talk about the Fargo-Moorhead Diversion Project. As you heard and saw in the press release, the Diversion Authority will be filing a new permit application with the state of Minnesota. So there's been a lot of questions about what's changed and how do those change impacts the project and impacts the people involved. So why did the project change? It really stems back to a lawsuit that was filed almost five years ago by Richland-Wilken County against the Corps of Engineers. That lawsuit was later joined by both the Diversion Authority and by the state of Minnesota. And last year in September, there was an injunction that was granted by Chief Justice Toonheim, which stopped all construction and allowed everybody to sort of regroup and rethink about things. And there's a quote up there from the judge. "It's time for all parties to work together to find common ground." I think since September, there's been a new motivation for that, and it's yielded some results. So since September, both governors, Governor Burgum and Governor Dayton, really took the lead, brought everybody together, formed a task force. It was them as co-chairs along with 16 others. You know, you saw this play out in the news. They had five almost full-day meetings between October and December. They made a number of recommendations we'll go through. They formed a technical advisory group that ultimately ended up being engineers from both the Corps of Engineers, from the DNR, from Richland-Wilken County, and from the Diversion Authority. They also formed a policy group. Maybe I should say, on that, the technical advisory group, Nathan Borboom from the city of Fargo was one of the members on there. The policy group, which was formed, of those same four entities, included Mayor Williams in Moorhead and Mayor Mahoney of Fargo, along with representative for the other entities. They held four meetings in St. Paul that were several hours each. So the governor's task force was a sort of a monumental put-together by the two governors and a dedication we hadn't seen in the past. And so I think we're all very pleased with the two governors and owe them our thanks for helping this progress forward. Commissioner Strand was a member of the task force and appreciate his efforts on that. I think you'll agree, it was very helpful to the process. They really sort of had a simple, simple parameters for a very complex solution. You know, to find a project that protected the metro area, that met local law and state law, and also kept authorization from the US government. So this slide is pretty complicated, but it's really the background against all the sort of contention against the project is, what level do you design a project to? There's a lot of different ways to look at that. FEMA has a certain level, Corps of Engineers had a certain level. And they weren't the same. There's a full period of record. And then there's actually some recent data that's totally unused. Well, the governors got to the bottom of this, I think at the first meeting, they got to it and really decided what you should design to is a minimum 100-year protection. And they decided what 100-year flood was and sort of see what pops up there. They decided to use the full period of record up until, I think, through 2009. So there's a number of unused data that's still being, you know, every year we get more data. At the end of the project, FEMA actually comes in and uses all that data to determine what it is, so there needs to be some flexibility because we know it continually changes. But that was a big step forward. They didn't solve everything. They did form this technical group to take the next step after the task force ended. And you see the parameters up there for the technical group that has been meeting, you know, I think they met a number of times, but every day they'd emails and model runs and everything else along the way. And Nathan's been working very hard for you, so give him a good bonus or year-end review. But they sort of had simple parameters, too. They strive for balance of flood protection, you know, and impacts between the two states, between the counties. Minimize acres removed from the flood plain, minimize the newly impacted acreage and structures, minimize impact on Richland-Wilken County with that goal of getting under the 640 acres. And also to consider the economics, the cost increases and the reductions. So in the end, the task force sent the Diversion Authority four recommendations. One was to use the full period of record, which they established a hydrology of 33,000 CFS, to allow a control flow through the city at 37 feet during 100-year flood. We'll get into this a little bit, but that's two feet higher than the previous design. A new western tieback in North Dakota, just south of Horace, and an eastern tieback in Minnesota, and we'll explain what those do for the project. But lastly, just want to, you know, thank Commissioner Strand and the other gang up there. It was a wide geographic representation, very inclusive, very collaborative. I think everybody came to it with good intentions and shared their thoughts and perspectives, and so we owe them a debt of gratitude. And Governor Dayton, in the task force report that came out, this was, I think, in his last paragraph of his statement, really sort of handed the reins back over to the Diversion Authority to develop a permit and submit it again with the changes that they recommended. So your technical team's been working fervently on a new permit application and implementing the changes, understanding what that does. So we're calling it Plan B. What is Plan B? You know, it's got a lot of similar features, but there's been a lot of changes as well. It's got a diversion channel, a southern embankment and control structures, still relies on temporary staging of floodwaters upstream in a controlled manner so we can control downstream impacts. And also relies on the in-town levees through both Fargo and Moorhead are still critical components. So there's a map up here that shows in blue what floods during 100-year flood, and this is based off the new governor's 100-year flood plain. And you can see as I flip back and forth, this is after the project. So you kind of get these two slides. I always say these two slides sort of sell the project, you know, you can see what the actual benefit is. It's kind of fun to do, too.
He just got back from his child's teacher conference.
Yeah. My kindergartner loves that slide. But increasing the flow through town, you know, this is a, it seemed like an easy decision at the task force, but this is really a major thing for people in town. It will require more levee work done, and Nathan's busy determining what exactly needs to be done for that. But it's pretty critical. So this, what it does for the project is it reduces the project operation from about once every 10 years on average to once every 20 years. And what that does for the upstream area is we're not storing water and backing up water on the fields in early springtime as often. And if you look back over the last 100-plus years, that's what that graph, the bar chart is below there, how many floods would have triggered that? And you see that 37 seem to be the magic number right in the middle that made sense to the task force, and so the Diversion Authority has accepted that recommendation. There's been five floods for a total of 28 days. You know, and this is sort of looking backwards, not forwards, but it's a good historical representation of how often the project really does operate. Of course, we know it only takes one day for, to lose a flood fight, and so that's the important part. The eastern tieback levee in Minnesota, this was a pretty major switch from the previous project. Before that, yellow line basically went east-west. And what this does is really help balance the impacts between the two states. And I think that was critical to the Department of Natural Resources in Minnesota, but it also does a number of other local benefits as well. City of Comstock previously needed a ring levee. It no longer needs a ring levee. We are going out to the city of Comstock on Thursday this week to talk with them about it. So city of Fargo, you're the first to get this presentation. I'm going to have to run to city of Moorhead later tonight and give the same presentation, but we have a number of meetings coming up, Comstock's on Thursday. Also eliminates the Highway 75 and the Burlington Northern raises. I think Bob Zimmerman, Moorhead, got a call from the Department of Transportation on Friday, you know, what does this project do? And Bob says, "Well, you don't have to ever call me again because we're not messing with your highways." And so I think that's a big deal for, you know, that area that uses that. Also impact to organic farms, there's that blue-green map in front of you. We'll show it later as well, but it has all the orange boxes where all the organic farms were that were impacted previously. And we've removed almost all those from being impacted. So the western tieback, this is south of Horace, right off Highway 17 or County Road 17, sort of shifts it to the southwest. It follows a natural ridge there. And this really allows more water to be stored on the North Dakota side in Cass County, and it reduces the impacts upstream on Richland-Wilken County and helps balance between North Dakota and Minnesota. Moving the southern embankment north on the North Dakota side, you can see it's somewhat of a squiggly line, and it's sort of trying to find the magic alignment there. It was a lot of effort from the technical team. You know, there's about 20 homes that are in that area that are now impacted that weren't impacted before. And I've taken a number of those phone calls over the last couple of days, and it's, you know, that's, those are tough calls to make. And so we need to remember, I think we're excited about the changes, excited about the new project, but there are still a lot of people impacted, a lot of new people impacted that weren't impacted before, and so we have a lot of work ahead of us as well. But allowing the water to be stored there does dramatically reduce the size of the staging area by about 7,000 acres in total. In addition to balancing it, removes five of the 11 cemeteries impacted from being impacted, so like everything else, there's a lot of trade-offs in developing a project. I'm going to turn it over to the mayor here.
So with the DNR, there's always trying to get a balance. So if you talk pre-task force, we had a North Dakota 81% protected areas, and staging area in North Dakota's side was 58%. So actually, that's a mismatch that we had in that area. With Plan B, you get North Dakota again protected as 81% and staging area is 81%. So we think that's a better balance with the state of Minnesota. You had also a statistic we used to look at is that newly flooded areas in Minnesota used to be 60-40, 60% in Minnesota, 40% in North Dakota. That has reversed as well to these figures. Temporary upstream staging, when you see the impacts, Oxbow is still going to need protection with the ring levee because of the 500-year event. If that comes, it will not be protected. They will get some water because of this at the 100 or the 500 flood staging. But you can see the staging area, as it sits there, is pretty dramatic, and what you can see in the upper part of it with the little box, we will take more water in that area, so maybe instead of having five feet, we may have 10 feet in that area. And you get cubic feet percent, or cubic storage feet, and that's partially what is helpful. I call this the map that kind of shows you duration of flood for 100-year flood. It goes from Texas to Florida almost, the size difference with pre or post-project. You can see that the water on the land is much less time. There's going to be deeper areas that it's going to be, but it's going to come off the land quicker, and it's a smaller footprint than we've had before. We see this as a great advantage, and you can see in Minnesota, it's a huge, huge change from before. The other thing is additional flood going down in Wilken and Richardson County. We see most of it stays within the river or along the flood area, and so we don't have as much water overland. It's more that it's just filling up as well as areas with an additional depth of water. Impacts are less, and impacts in homes on the Minnesota side are less as well. So what's next? We, in talking to Commissioner Land, we're elected that, what could we do to move this project forward, and he said apply for a permit. So the reason it's not rushed or anything, it's just that we feel that in order to move the process further, forward, we need to apply for the permit. By statute, that can take 150 days. DNR has agreed with us to work with it to try to make it expedited with environmental assessments that need to be done. The Corps has to do environmental assessments. All those will be expedited as far as we're understanding, and Nathan will work with the team to see what's the best way to do that. We feel the first time this project came out, we may have failed the public by not going out and doing community outreach, so you'll see there's 20, 25 meetings coming up. And basically, we're in a tie to talk to everybody, and all those people, the input is important, so they're very welcome to put input into this project. How can we do it better? What I've heard from Wilken and Richardson County is sometimes it was a question of mitigation or how we would handle different things. We have moved this impact off Wilken and Richardson County, so to me, it's a major change from before. So the public comment period will be part of the permit. People will be able to speak to this. The technical and financial, it will have to be microcited, and that just means the alignment's drawn in the line, and for people out there that see their house or farm in the area of the line, it has to still be microcited, so it might not be exactly what's on the map we're putting out there. So if people call you, Nathan is who they should call, or Bob Zimmerman. There will be a new cost estimate. Commissioner Grinberg is working on that a little bit with legislative people as well. And we're trying to figure out what it will be. The P3 will be bid in November, basically. So we won't have the P3 part of the contract bid for that, like the time. And the other changes on the diversions itself basically have to be recalculated. The early estimate is 200 million, but US commissioners sometimes know that changes. Value of money was just, when we did the 2.2 billion, that was in $15. So it may well change, and that's one of the things we're going to have to grapple with. State of Minnesota did put in its bonding budget money, and it is, 43 is what they were up for before. The new cost changes will probably be an additional 50, so that'd be 93 million. We have assurances by Governor Dayton that they will cover Minnesota costs, so whatever part of the project that's in Minnesota, they have told us that they would cover that cost. They have 8 million, which is, remember one time, we only got 5 million from the feds, you know, they already have 8 million in the Minnesota for this year. Funding and financial planning, Commissioner Grinberg will be working hard on that in the financial committee to try to figure out how are we going to pay for it. And the three different buckets are basically Minnesota, North Dakota, and federal. Our congressional delegation has reached out to us and will try to assist us, but if we talk to the Corps, oftentimes they'll say it's 450, that's where it stands, and it gets inflationary changes to that. It'll be questioned with the new infrastructure bill that's out there with what Trump is doing. There may be some other ways of either getting lower interest bond money out of the government, out of the federal government, and/or there are some ways of leveraging some things to maybe get some more money, but I wouldn't necessarily count on that. When I look at that, I think our biggest struggle will be to try to figure out with North Dakota how to help us cover the shortfall. So it's open for question, and Nathan, you want to come up here in case they have technical questions? Now that Rocky is trying to get you a raise. So we're open to questions.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, mayor. I'm just curious about the timeline with regard to contracts in place now, management in place, and how that impacts that level of this project while it's somewhat on hold until a permit would be awarded?
Sure. I might ask Nathan to come up and handle that one.
So right now, the Diversion Authority has one open contract that is on hold down in Oxbow. We're hopeful that construction will be able to resume down there within a few months. That's one item that we are working through with the DNR, and we'll be asking for approval through the judge to hopefully resume that construction. And the inlet construction, the Corps is looking at continuing to suspend that contract for additional few months in order to allow the permit process to continue to move forward and hopefully get a permit by the Minnesota DNR, allow that to move forward.
Mr. Derrick.
Maybe a legal question, but will the injunction end once we get permits from Minnesota?
Well, the thought has been that the injunction is against the old project, so if we get a permit, it would be, we're permitting a new project, so we wouldn't be proceeding with the old project. So by default, it almost sounds like the attorneys say that the injunction should drop then.
Only one question?
No, one more, I guess. You know, a lot of this is going to hinge on the cost estimate for me. We talked about this, you know, we don't know what that's going to be or how we're going to fund it. Even with the old project, we were falling behind as far as sales tax revenue goes. We're expecting a 2% increase every year for 80 years. And even this year, we had a 2% decrease, which is a 4% swing, early on in the project, which is, that wrecks the model, basically. So when we talk about the new cost estimate, whenever that comes out, and whenever we talk about the new funding, I just want to be honest with the people and not underestimate, which I think we have done in the past. Just with the $60 million inflationary, you know, cost, we always estimate with every year going by, not starting the project. It's been three years since 2015. That's, you know, $180 million. So already, the project should be 2.4 billion, not 2.2, so we have to decide what year dollars we're talking. We should always talk in current-year dollars, not 2015 or 2016 or anything like that. So that's my concern ultimately, but there's nothing to be answered to because we don't have those estimates in front of us right now.
Mr. Grinberg.
Commissioner Derrick brings up a very good point, and as Rocky and the mayor presented, you know, this, now we have a path. For months, we had no pathway where we were going with this project, and so this will energize the various committees, at least from the finance chair that I, committee that I chair. We can start to get our heads around this now, and as noted, the P3 will be bid in November. And so, you know, that will be an optimistic, hopefully, bid that we'll have that will be part of this. But backing away from that, as noted, when we get the true cost of Minnesota to this project, and Minnesota's share stepped up, that's part of this. My personal opinion is the federal government needs to step up above $450 million. We've had meetings with Senator Hoven over the past few months. The Corps, they, on behalf of the taxpayers for our region, federal government needs to step up. And then we have the state, and so is there a fair request of what number that will be to the state to the Water Resources Trust Fund? And thankfully, the oil now is over $60 a barrel, and that, that trust fund is going to grow again for that discussion to take place. And then the legislation that's been reported, we've had lunch today on the legacy fund and using a low-interest loan program to leverage against, you know, decline in sales tax combined with the inflationary costs of what the project would cost with $20, $20. So over the next 60 days, I believe we'll have a better feel what that number is, and then start to put a plan together to address that. So we're at, in my opinion, we're at step seven out of a 10-step process. Step eight is the permit, and all the nuances that go with the permit, the phased approach to the permit and the timing of that. Step nine is the completion of the financial package, and then step 10 is cutting the ribbon when the place is up for operation six, eight years from now. But there's a lot of work yet to do, and there's probably some moving parts yet that we don't, haven't anticipated, but at least now we have a path to start working on and getting this down on behalf of the residents for permanent flood protection. So I think we're all ready to step up and figure it out.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, and Commissioner Grinberg may be tacking onto that, tagging onto that. How about mitigation? At what point does mitigation become front burner? And the cost and the implications of mitigation and satisfying the impacted folks upstream especially?
You know, that's a very good question. You know, I think it's always been a front burner item for a lot of us, and just recently, the Diversion Authority Board voted to go ahead with a flow adjustment valuation study, Phase 1 of it. And that started, and we expect to see some results in September, and really, flow adjustments is a legal right to store water on somebody's property. And it's really the major question we get from the upstream area, from the farmers or the landowners, is, you know, okay, what's my compensation? You know, they're trying to figure out how to run their business. And we're finally making some good progress on that, I think, because we've studied it in the past, but this will get us some more hard, hard facts and better answers for everybody.
And if I might continue, what type of engagement and participation would be involved or collaboration with folks upstream? Would they be at the table in shaping this, or how would that unfold?
Yeah, there's a couple of steps to it, of course, and, you know, we had a meeting, I think, probably two weeks ago over at the county highway department, and I think the whole egg committee was invited to that and a couple of other individuals as well. We didn't have a great representation, but there were a number of people there that represent the upstream area and upstream landowners that did, was involved with the consultant that's been hired to do that study. And so there has been that feedback. We encourage more of that, and so if there's more people out there who want to be involved in that, we'd welcome that input for sure.
Thank you.
And John, just to go on, on top of that, is they did like the consultant we picked because it's somebody who has some credibility in the community, that's been out there before, that understands the farmers, how this works. And the two people that were, are very vocal farmers that have been part of this process, so we are hopeful that they could get some good data and have good information.
Thank you. That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Apologize for running out.
We'll go on to public hearings. Item 29A, Timber Creek 7th Edition, 3559, 3571, 3583, 47th Avenue South. Approval recommended by Planning Commission on 1/4/18. Zoning change from an SR2 single-dwelling residential to an SR4 single-dwelling residential. First reading of the rezoning ordinance and plat of Timber Creek 7th Edition. Please, senior planner Donald Cruss, if you would, explain.
Good evening, commissioners. Donald Cruss from the Department of Planning and Development. I'll be presenting the next three items. As the, as the mayor has stated, item 29A is a plat and zone change for Timber Creek 7th Edition. This property is located at 47th, 47th Avenue South, east of I-29. Here's Timber Parkway South here. The property is currently zoned SR2 single-dwelling residential. The zone change proposes SR4 single-dwelling residential, which is the zoning that is across 47th Avenue from that current properties. The difference between these two zones is two major ones. One, the density. The SR2, the existing zoning, allows a density of 5.4 dwelling units per acre, while the SR4 allows a density of 12.1 dwelling units per acre. Another major difference is the SR4 zoning, that is, the proposed zoning, allows side-by-side housing, attached housing, while the SR2 zoning does not. The zone change is included in your packet as an ordinance prepared by the city attorney's office. The plat will create six lots in one block. All these lots meet the minimum lot area for the SR4 zone of 3,600 square feet. All lots will be accessed from dedicated public streets. That would be 47th Avenue South. There are no TIFs or other incentives associated with this project. Commissioners, planning staff has received five comment letters regarding this project from nearby residents. These comments emphasize objections to the increased density and the residents concerned that they believe that only detached, single-family housing would be allowed in this area. All five letters are included in your packet for today. The applicant Nate Vollmuth is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. The planning commission's recommendation for approval is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, commissioners.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this recommendation? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? We'll go back to the map for this gentleman.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
I, I live on 46th Avenue. And when all this was going down with the timber line, what they were going to do in there, there was a lot of give and take.
Can you give your name, please?
Oh, Wayne Hanks. Wayne Hanksup. There was a lot of give and take negotiation, and the end result, we were promised one row of single-dwelling houses as a buffer before it got, before they went to the other style houses. I guess the people down there, we're just concerned about resell up our houses. I guess the people down there, we're just concerned about resale of our houses. I think those six houses will probably be more of starter homes, and I don't know if there's going to be long-lasting families that move into there. But, you know, whatever happens, that's what our concerns are about it, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Nate, you speak?
Thank you, Commissioners. Nate Vollmuth, representing Pace's Lodging. I do have a PowerPoint, if needed, but I can just talk through it quickly. I feel like the, the request maybe sounds worse than it is with reading off how many units you could actually fit on those lots. The request is basically to take six single-family lots and, or three single-family lots and make it six single-family lots. It's not for an apartment building, it's not for, it's not for an apartment building, it's not for anything other than that, it's for twin homes or, or split twins is what we call the properties on the south side of the street. So, I can go, I can just go through this really quick for you. So, the orange is, is the area for the rezone. Those are the three lots on the existing plat. Those are the six new lots. Just understanding of what's around it, right now, basically, we're asking for there to be three twin homes. That would be the maximum, otherwise, there'd be six split twins. So, right now, directly to the north-
Could you put a twin home on there if you wanted?
It would be on two lots.
On two lots.
Yep, so, yep. So, directly north of it, basically, all the way along this frontage road, there's a, there's a, I don't know if in the other development, it's the same way, but in our development, this is, this is owned by the city. It's a landscape buffer, and I believe it's the same way in all these up here. Well, that buffer is installed on that development, it's not installed on our development, which is part of our request, but, but then, the next two lots is all twin homes. So, in retrospect, we should have probably asked for at least the, for this most west lot to be a twin home as a buffer, because that's more than likely the reason they did that on Fox Run. So, and then there's a two, I think it's 220-foot buffer of the Park District, and then it's, it's our lots here. So, yeah, 220 feet between property lines. So, I think from, from the back of this house to the back of this house, it's three, 350 feet or something like that. So, these are the, from the five letters that were submitted. This home talked about the resale. This request was from a current twin home lot that, that doesn't want the twin home lots here. This one was for resale, this one was for resale, and then that was for resale, and this is the other side of that twin home. So, like I said previously, kind of the thought was that probably originally, at least that for this most west one, should have been a twin home lot as a, as one more buffer other than the, the vegetative buffer that the city will install. So, we're asking for essentially the, the three to be twin home lots.
What's your intent on the rest of them, Nate? Because I recall when we had the controversy of this, I think the Fox Run people expected to have a buffer of, you know, bigger homes just prior to their place. Is the intent, is you're just going to do these three lots and the rest are going to stay as they are presently planned, or are you going to come back piece by piece?
That is our intent of, we only, we own these three lots, continue, that chunk, and then there's a sold lot, we own another lot, there's a sold lot. So, we are only looking at these three lots to turn it to twin home lots as a buffer to help spur the rest of that development forward. And then, part of the other request is to ask for the city to install that, that buffer. So, this is the, per the amenities plan, the city will install a landscape buffer on these two outside lots. We gave those to the city for that buffer to match the ones to the north, so. I just more, more or less just came up to, hopefully, to ease a little bit of the concerns that it's, we're not going to try to fit anything else in there other than hopefully three twin homes, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Strand?
Nate, if you could come back for a second, I'm just curious, or maybe you can give a sense of, to what degree will this improve or not affordability of this housing or these lots for the general public?
A little, the issue, this is maybe my personal opinion, but the issue is the lots price is one thing, but when we constructed these lots, it was kind of in the boom, and the specials on these lots are roughly, actually, they're almost more than what the actual price of the lot is. So, breaking these down is going to greatly increase the ability for someone to afford them. And it's not necessarily, I'm not saying it was the city's fault that the specials are that high, it was just, the time that this was platted and worked on, there's a lot of other plats, developments happening, and contractors are busy, and they were giving higher bids. So, it will definitely help that, spur that. Hopefully, it helps create a buffer and spur more of those lots to be developed within the block. Does that answer your question, or?
To a degree. I'm just wondering if we could quantify it at all. You know, I know in other projects, we were able to see a tangible difference in pricing when they went to higher density and, and it opened the doorway for more affordable housing, and I'm just hoping that's for sure the case.
Well, I can say the, the current lots are listed for, I believe, $54,000. So, I would say, I, I'm not going to say there, it'll be cut in half, but it'd probably be roughly half that price for the, the split lots.
Commissioner Garrick?
I'm going to try to help you answer that. I, I live in this neighborhood, I'm in Fox Run. So, the houses on the south side of 47th are, those are all bought and occupied for the most part, right?
Correct.
And the ones on the north side, you're having issues, if I may, in filling those lots with home buyers.
Correct.
So, when you talk about the affordability part of that, I think that it's obvious that the market is telling us, hey, we want these smaller ones versus those, you know, marginally bigger ones on a bigger lot. Now, I, I am sensitive, because they are my neighbors, to the idea that we did promise these folks that there would be a buffer there. To your point, there is a pretty large buffer there in just green space, and what I think, you know, people would be more upset about is if we had apartments there, you know, so they are single-family homes, there is a large buffer there of green space. You know, I think this is an older picture, right? There are some homes that have been built there since this picture was taken, is that true?
I believe this is fairly, I mean, that's showing the open lot that the city owns in those three lots, and then there's a home, all of them on the bottom are full. I don't, I don't believe there's a newer one, but-
So, while I'm sensitive to, you know, the concerns of, of the people that I live next to, I don't think this will affect the value of my home or anyone else's home to have three twin homes. They'll be bought up quickly, and I think it's worse to have open lots sitting there than it is to have nice new homes there for people to buy.
Any other comments?
Commissioner Strand? I, I just have another question, and, and I don't know exactly the distance from this development, the beginning of the development, to the interstate. But I know last year, when we were discussing apartments at 17th Avenue South and interstate, the issue of health safety came up, and, and there had been a recommendation from the city to have a certain distance of 300 or so feet, so feet from the interstate for health, safety, health safety. Is this within that parameter, that 300 feet, or is it closer than 300 feet to the interstate where the beginning of this development would be?
We could look at this, it doesn't have, well, the interstate kind of shows here. This is, I believe this is 150-foot right-of-way for the frontage road, and then this is a 40-foot, so that's 190, and then I don't know what the, what the easement or right-of-way size is for the interstate, but I'd say it's probably 250 feet from the actual drivable surface of the interstate.
And my concern is, the city had embarked on a path where that was their policy, or recommended policy going forward, but now, I'm not sure if that's out the window, or, because of our precedent, or not.
John, that follows the frontage road for Fox Run, so it's the same distance all of Fox Run is as well, Tony and I know. So, you have a frontage road, then you have the interstate, and then you typically have a buffer. So, if you drive that area or walk that area, you'll, I mean, you'll notice the interstate, but I think it's further away than the apartment. I can't say that, because the apartment complex was placed on the other side, but there's definitely some distance.
That's, that's not further than a football field, you know what I mean? It's definitely within the three-
Mr. Chairman, just-
Commissioner Grinberg?
Commissioner Strand is raising some of the, the issue that the planning commission has struggled with. If you go approximately a mile south of this project, there will be twin homes that are well within 300 feet of the interstate, and the planning commission weighed the fact that the builder was going to put in soundproof, or some soundproofing material and higher-quality windows in exchange for that permission to build closer to the interstate. And so, that was granted by the planning commission, and we supported that. The apartment project you're talking about, of the two buildings that are now occupied along I-29, there was one small corner that was within 300 feet, rest beyond 300 feet of the, anyway, my point taken. And I, I agree with Commissioner Garrick. You know, if you look at, maybe this is a question that Don or Nicole can address, when you drive into Fox Run now, it's very typical that the first houses from the west are twin homes. And so, my guess is either that was the way it was platted originally, and this was missed on the plating, to Nate's point, it's just an adjustment that's consistent with the neighborhood, plus the buffer there.
John, it must be you, your green tie is just too overwhelming.
Tried, tried to be in the festive spirit of the upcoming St. Patrick's Day, sir. So, Commissioners, may I just clarify one thing with the apartment? The, Mr. Vollmuth, the amenities plan you referred to is the underlying plat amenities plan, there is no separate amenities plan for this. Okay, thank you, sir.
Can I have a motion?
Mayor, I just have one last question.
Okay.
Of the folks that were outreach to within 300 feet to find out if they had any concerns or not, and I think you had one and then five more, so there may be five, six that registered concerns, what percentage of that is the number of properties that were asked for their opinion within the 300 feet? I mean, how many properties is that? What percentage of the properties total is, is that number of five or six?
I don't have that mailing list in front of me, sir. I can't tell that by looking at it here.
It's obviously not more than 50%, because-
I do not believe it would be, sir.
That would trigger a supermajority, so it's probably substantially less, but, okay.
Do we have a motion?
I would move the planning commission recommendation that we adopt the proposal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item 29B, PTP Edition, 2856 Brant Drive South. Approval recommended by Planning Commission on 1418. Zoning change to repeal and reestablish conditional overlay on Lot 1, Block 1. First reading of the rezoning ordinance. Planning Commissioners, Donald Crust to explain.
No, not Commissioner, just Planner, sir. Item 29B is a modification of the existing conditional overlay for the PTP Edition. This is located in the urban plains area, along Brant Drive, west of 45th Street and north of 32nd Avenue South. This modification of a conditional overlay is treated as a zone change through this hearing process. The property is zoned LC, limited commercial, and this underlying zone is actually not changing. Existing conditional overlay, ordinance 4978, approved March 2, 2015, for various portions of urban plains, provides design guidelines for development in this area. The applicant proposes to modify two of the design guidelines relating to accent construction materials on the rear of the, on the rear of the structure and the location of parking for the structure, as noted in the staff report. The applicant is intending to build a, a medical building that looks similar to this, and, whoops, and that's an aerial view there. It's, this is a little interesting property here because the front is a dedicated public street. These two streets on the side, though you can't tell by looking at them from the aerial, are private streets. So, a little different frontage situation here than would it be if they were surrounded by public streets. Zoning change is included in your packet as an ordinance prepared by the city attorney's office. Planning staff has received one phone call inquiring about this project. The applicant architect David Schultz is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. There are no TIFs or other incentives associated with this project. The planning commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this zoning change? Anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just one.
Commissioner Garrick?
What does the fire department think of private streets in this area? Any, any issues?
They did not-
Didn't say anything?
No, they, the private streets are existing, sir. So, and this doesn't change any access or size of the building, it would be anticipated there.
Yeah, it's always a discussion when we have private roads, the fire department usually has an opinion on that kind of thing.
Yes, sir. This was platted apparently some time ago, so.
Fire department's been busy lately, too.
Yeah, they are.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item C, Grayland First Edition. Approved recommendation by the planning commission on 11/7/17. Zoning change from agricultural to single-dwelling residential, SR3, single-dwelling residential and public and institutional. First reading of the rezoning ordinance, plat of Grayland First Edition. Donald Crust to explain as well.
Thanks, sir. Item 29C, as the mayor has stated, is a plat and zone change for the Grayland First Edition. This property is located south of 52nd Avenue and west of 63rd Street. It's this area here, and then Deer Creek is down here, and this property is currently underdeveloped, or undeveloped. The existing zoning is agricultural. The zone change proposes to change the zoning to SR2 for the larger residential lots, SR3 for the smaller lots, and PEI, the public and institutional, for the detention base and lots, and this is a future West Fargo Elementary School lot. The zone change is included in your packet as an ordinance prepared by the city attorney. So, as you see here, there are three sets of lots, we'll go to the plat here, get the feel for it, but I'm going to go back to that zoning map because it's a little easier for you to reference there. So, these larger lots here are, all meet the minimum zoning area, or zoning, minimum lot area of 8,000 square feet. These meet the minimum lot area here of 5,000 square feet. Lot 19 is dedicated to the city for a regional stormwater detention, and this property, this narrow lot here, this is Lot 1 of Block 3, that's also going to be acquired by the city. And the larger property here will become, be conveyed by the developer to the city of West Fargo for a future elementary school, which they hope to be starting construction on this spring. It'll be approximately a 550-student K through 5 elementary school. Not right here, sir. No, they're, they're farther east, I believe. I don't think they own this part here. And then this is, Mr. Gensler owns this part here. Howard Gensler.
Commissioner Garrick, Garrick, please.
Maybe a silly question. You've talked with the water plant and engineering for this, there's a major water project, like you mentioned, that's happening here, and they're-
Yes, sir. I'm just about to come to that, sir. As Commissioner Garrick has noted, this diagonal ditch here, which has been there for many years, a few decades, actually, is now part of the Red River Valley Water Supply System, and we have, the applicant actually originally submitted this back last spring and was wanting to go forward with it, and at the time, it was, this was coming forward from the, from the state, as Commissioner Garrick has indicated, that this is, we need to have this ditch of a certain size and depth, and so, for many months, the applicant was working with the city and the state to, to get this to work, and that's one of the land exchanges there that is related to this, vacation and easement is involved in this, an old easement, a spoiled easement from some time ago, and city staff, the water department, city engineering, and the state have been involved in this, and we do appreciate the applicant's patience in working with us, but they've been quite cooperative, and we've been able to, as Commissioner Garrick has stated, make this a successful piece of the Red River Valley Water Supply Project.
Any other comments?
And the planning department's recommendation, they're, in their-
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this zoning change? Is anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Strand, do you have a mic now so you can speak again?
Thank you, I'm just, is the school committed to moving there? Or is that a, an option to move there?
It is, I intend they are, I guess I don't know what their exact real estate legal part is, but Mark Lemire, who is their business manager, has been coming to the meetings, and they are intending to convey, Mr. Saki, maybe we can, what's the exact status of the, oh, okay, I have a more authoritative source than myself, sir.
We have a more authoritative source than myself, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name's Tony Ukel. I'm a civil engineer consultant for West Fargo School District. So currently, right now, we've completed design documents and this project is out for bid. The intent is to start breaking ground in May and we'll be home to them fall of 2019.
So my next question, I'm not sure that's for you, but to what degree is the school anticipating or what do we, to what degree are we projecting specials for that property?
Don't know.
I don't know if I know that number, sir. For the school property.
I'm, I'm looking at this and I'm just studying more about specials, but it must be very substantial special assessments for the whole region and schools are also special assessed also. But, so that hasn't been calculated yet or formulated or?
Just working with the city of Fargo, I know they're currently in design. I don't know if they have estimated engineers' budgets for this property yet or where that is. I just know that they're currently in design and are going to follow suit with
Dan, could you come up and explain perhaps what the specials might be? John has your curiosity if you can save money, West Fargo.
The answer's a lot.
Oh, I hear you.
It's a lot. It's a big property.
Right now.
So I think, you know, Dan can maybe give you an estimate of what they would be, but we've just started the pre-design, so we do not have our engineer's estimate. We're just getting that assembled right now. Once that engineer's estimate is assembled, then that's when Dan will take that number and then do a pre-run and get that information out to all the owners.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion?
Just give an estimate.
Dan, you same comment?
Shot over the bow right now. I'd be looking at somewhere around 650 a foot for this type of residential area, which is really, it's a lot better than we've been seeing over the last couple of years.
So the city of Fargo, of West Fargo will help finance our specials in that area, is that what you're saying, Dan?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Donald. Have a happy St. Patrick's Day.
Yes, sir.
We're going to go back to 28.
You got D.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is this public? I guess it is.
Yes.
Sorry, Julie.
That's okay.
D, Section 5307 Federal Transportation Administration Grant Preliminary Program of Projects 2018. Julie Bummelman to explain this to us.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners, Mayor. Attached to my letter, you'll see, this is an annual requirement that the federal transit administration has to give the public an opportunity to see what their allocation will be used for in the federal register every year for 5307 properties, which we are. They're, they publish an allocation that we take and we will use for planning, we'll use it for operating, and we will use it for preventive maintenance. So those, they have not published it yet for 2018, so I took the 2017 number, put 2% on top of it and estimated it, which is about, generally speaking, every year, that's what we do, so that when the actual allocation comes through, we're ready with our grant process to get started on that. So anyway, happy to answer any questions and open the hearing.
Any questions?
If I could.
Mr. Strand.
About the ADA aspect of this, what would that entail?
The, what this is, is the first 10% of ADA costs can be funded as capital, so it can be an 80/20 match instead of the 50/50 as operating. So the, what we estimate is the ADA costs for the year as far as per transit goes. And, but only 10% of that can be funded as capital, so this isn't the full cost. The rest is in the operating 50/50.
So this is for information? Do we have to vote? Any action?
Yes, just, it's a public hearing, so approval of it.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for Real American Program of Projects in 2018? Anybody wishes to speak? If not, we'll close public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Yep.
Second.
Gary, Grinberg. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
I guess item 30 was a public one as well, but it's going to be withdrawn anyway, so I just have to have, that we agree to that. So application for abatement or refund of taxes, 4472, submitted by Patrick Basie, representing Aurora Pines at 2 at District LLP for property located at 3556th Avenue South. The application has requested this item be withdrawn. Is there a motion to withdraw?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Strand, Garrick. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Now I can go back to 28. So Jim, you've always had to wait for things, eh? And we come down to the end here and you had to wait once again. So we're going to have an update of the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Corporation, President Jim Garten to present. As you may well know, Jim is going to be leaving us, so he's done a lot of good work in the city and got a lot of different businesses to us, so I think we should give him a round of applause. He's going to go back to some distant country in Midwest, right? Ohio? Okay. Mark, you're up.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Commission, Mark Box with the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC with our quarterly report. Just a couple of things to highlight. Of the nine expansion projects that we're working on so far this year, six of them are in Fargo, two in the manufacturing industry, two in distribution, and two in IT. We are working with four business attraction projects from outside the region, looking at the Fargo-Moorhead, West Fargo Metro. Two of those are in Fargo or interested in Fargo, one in manufacturing, one in the UAS industry. The establishment of the logistics corridor between Fargo and Winnipeg is far beyond our expectations. It's simplified the process, consolidated shipment and the movements of goods between the two communities. It will open up more markets for Fargo companies doing business in Manitoba and it's also increased our activity from a business attraction standpoint from Manitoba into our markets. We're really excited about that. We've done some great work and really appreciate the city's support on the Solid Comfort Project that I worked with Mr. Gilmore on and the North 33rd Street Project out near Dijiki. They are very appreciative of the city's efforts and moving that forward and getting that paved this year, so on their behalf, thank you. On the entrepreneurial support, so far this year, we have assisted 25 entrepreneurs looking in the region. 19 of those or 76% are in Fargo. We are very excited to announce the launch of a new website, liveinfargo.com. This website is to market Fargo and the surrounding community to potential businesses and workforce in our workforce retention and attraction efforts. And I'll close with some good news on our growth initiative fund. In 2017, we approved 19 loan funds, 14 of those in Fargo totaling $1.1 million in loan funds, part of over $23 million in capital investment by those companies. These are record numbers for our growth initiative fund, so a lot of great activity. 2018 is off to a good start. Unless you have any questions, I'll turn it over to Mr. Garten. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor, Council, Commission. Always getting mixed up from place to place, but thanks for the opportunity. We really have appreciated working with you. I have very much over the last six years. Thursday's my last day. I will be transitioning to Cincinnati, Ohio to be closer to my grandchildren, so I'm very excited about that. But as we transition out, there's a couple of things that I wanted to share with you. We are in the transition phase for hiring a new president. We are down to six candidates, two internal candidates. Mark is one of those, as John Mahachek is, and then we have four external candidates. Interview process will start next week, meaning those people will be coming into our market and doing the interviews. We're happy to announce that we have an interim president, Paul Lucy, who used to be the head of economic development for the Department of Commerce in the state of North Dakota, has agreed to come in on an interim basis because two of our senior people are both vying for the position. We felt that it necessary to have somebody from the outside. So Paul has graciously agreed to come in. He's a great added person. He used to be at the EDC, as Tony was years ago, so I think he'll be a great, great addition for the next couple of months until we get a permanent president on, on site. As we move into 2018, one of the key areas that the EDC was working on was the Workforce Council. That's moving forward. The website that you just heard about is, is all part of the workforce study and, and that will be transitioning over to the Workforce Council. The funding to spend the dollars necessary to get that out into the marketplace, not here, but Minneapolis, you know, Denver, Chicago, surrounding areas that we draw people from, that's where the big push will be and, and all of those funds will come from the EDC, the funding that we committed for in 2018 as part of our commitment for having dollars for focused programs within workforce development. One of the things that I wanted to just share with you as we move forward and close out and that you'll be hearing much more about as part of the Workforce Council, is that we've heard a lot about workforce. You know, sometimes I think we're all going around in circles trying to figure out exactly what the issue is or what the needs are and what's going on. And sometimes I'm not sure that we've really taken a deep dive into the actual numbers. So we've gone out and had some numbers run externally and internally about what's available. We've used what's called SOC codes, SOC, very like SIC codes for industrial use, and we've taken it out to six digits to try to really get a broad definition in our area right now, in our labor shed, exactly what's available and what's going on. And when we looked at the numbers, we were amazed. I was amazed and I think as we move forward with that, 38% of all the available jobs in our region, and I'm saying not just Cass County, but in our region, are jobs that are under $30,000. Really a pretty amazing percentage if you think about that. And as you look at that, you also realize that having people attracted to come into our marketplace for $30,000 jobs with our cost of living rising is, is going to be a very difficult task. So in some way, we are going to have to, and I say we, I still say we, are going to have to differentiate ourselves in relationship to what is the difference between our region and other regions to be able to draw those people in. And I think we're going to have to make some very strong commitments in relationship to first and center, second generation new Americans. I think we're going to have to make some interesting decisions and investments in daycare and in low to mod housing within our marketplace if we really want to commit for long-term growth and address this problem. So it was interesting, I, I looked down at the, the sector that was, really had the most open positions and they, they were basically the, the single largest right now. There's 757 open positions in retail and retail management in our marketplace. In the manufacturing area, there's only 6.5% of those positions, open positions. There's right now only about 439 open manufacturing positions in our market. That to me is just amazing, but we are less, just a little over 6% of our open positions are in the manufacturing area, which, which kind of surprised me as we finally looked down at the numbers. And the largest single sector is, everybody can figure out, 11.5% is in the healthcare area that, you know, we have almost 800 open available positions within the healthcare industry. So I think we have some very specific targeted issues that we, we are going to have to address at the Workforce Council, and I hope that you support that Workforce Council as it moves forward, because I think we need to look at these numbers and we need to really address those issues that are paramount to the long-term success of our region and our process. So I really thank you so much for the opportunity for the last six years and, and appreciate having been in Fargo and serving this community. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jim, for all your hard work over those years. Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mr. Garten. Your service has always, has always been appreciated and good luck to you. You know, your mention of new Americans is important in our workforce conversation and you make note of daycares and housing. I would add English language learning to that list. I think it's a really primary need in our community. We, we had a public hearing here, or public meeting of the Human Relations Commission a few weeks ago and maybe 15, 20 new Americans in the audience and some weren't speaking English and we were
John, can you move your mic closer because the English seeking people here can't hear you?
Some were really not able to speak English. Their skill set isn't there and had to have interpreters and they're talking about workforce issues. So if we can all collaborate and, and at every level and, and set a, a new pace and raise the bar for language learning across the board in our city, I think the, the result would just be significant.
We're seeing in the new American community, our biggest growth there is in second generation new Americans. People who have already been on boarded in other areas across the country are hearing about our opportunities through other relationships or friends or family and now are coming here. That's where we're seeing the biggest growth, especially in our manufacturing areas right now.
And if I just might continue a little further, how about the cultural aspects of immigrants and new Americans? Do you gauge that of how welcoming our community is or how accepting our community is or, or measure the challenges of, of folks coming here to, to, to get, to establish themselves comfortably in our community?
Well, one of the things that we realized, there's a lot of segregated little, little pockets of, of issues going around about new Americans. Who's helping who? How it's going on? So as part of the workforce study, we said, who is the best person to deal with that? And that determination among our group was the United Way. So the United Way has, has committed and we have helped fund that as well as the Chamber and other people, a full-time position at United Way that'll be totally focused on how we, how and how we support and what are the programs necessary and then the United Way can help fund them. And so they've made that commitment. Actually, they're out looking for the position and it made sense to, to put that where, you know, the, the biggest help could come from and we felt United Way was a part of that.
Just to follow up. You know, Jim's spot on. I recently flew in from Chicago and went to my phone and hit Lyft for a ride home and this gentleman who picked me up had a brand new Nissan Maxima, had, you know, broken English, but was a delightful individual and so we struck up a conversation as we're going to South Fargo. And he was sharing that he is spreading the word that in Fargo, North Dakota, you can work hard and get ahead and it's a safe place. And he insisted when we got to my driveway that I drove his car because I was so impressed with it. He wouldn't leave until I drove around the block in his car. I mean, that, I mean, that's a genuine kind of approach to things that you don't probably find somewhere else, but he was, he was echoing your exact point that family and people connected to these networks are coming here because of the jobs and the opportunity to thrive.
And we have to take advantage of that. Right now, it's, it doesn't have a focus that, and it needs to.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you.
One last question. Of your, you said 38% of the jobs available are, are less than $30,000 wage scale. How many are minimum wage?
Well, I could look at that. I mean, I have the breakdown by, by numbers of people, how many open positions, what their salaries are, what, I mean, so I can forward that.
Did you do that before you leave? Send that to them on email?
Sure.
Thank you.
One more task.
Bengals-Vikings, who do you root for?
I'm still, after all these years, Cleveland Browns fan, sorry.
Too bad Dave Pepcorn wasn't here. Well, one other thing I have to announce tonight, Greg's grandmother is here and she sat here all day. We had to finish early here so that she could get him home since he's recently had something done to his eyes. Greg and Katie have been working on this, so this is a big day for them. Tonight was another day in our advancement of technology in the city of Fargo as this meeting was our first to be broadcast on Facebook Live. Tony's got it up right now.
I have two viewers.
We, we will.
I'm one.
We will expand to live broadcast on Twitter and YouTube in two weeks.